Whatever it is, provision clause of the ordinance saying that we can just hire somebody because it is a health and safety thing, I don't know the answer to that.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I have not been asked to look at that, but we certainly can, and advise Sean. I think you could make the motion to abate the nuisance either as an emergency response, or if it doesn't warrant emergency response, then to follow the normal procedure. But you could make that motion tonight if you're so inclined.
So we have to make a motion on the abatement?
Correct, to initiate the process.
This is Scott. My question, Sean, is what kind of garbage is this? Is this like food product in there where we're going to attract rats and other kind of vermin?
Yeah, it appears to be household trash. I didn't dig through, but from a couple of the bags when I walked by with a deputy from a couple of the bags, I saw some plastic, or pardon me, some paper plates with food residue. It looks like it's household trash, which I would imagine the inside of the house is probably worse, but who knows?
Yeah, well, my concern would be with the outside of the house for the emergency, right?
Yeah, and that's assuming why the skunks are showing up and...
Who knows what else?
Right.
Yeah.
Is there garbage in the back, too?
Yes.
What do we do now? Just make a motion, huh?
So, and can we be specific on what we're cleaning up, too? Like, the outside of the house and what the pictures are showing here in the outside trash? We're not necessarily going beyond that for the emergency abatement, or?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, yes, that would be appropriate to kind of restate some of the facts and why you consider it an emergency as part of the discussion and/or motion.
Okay.
Ms. Jenny, this is hard. I grew up going to this house. I knew the original owners, so I appreciate your efforts to work to clean it up because I still know quite a few of the residents on that street, and I'm sure it's an ISO for them as well. So thank you for your work on this.
It's funny, it went as long as it did.
I'm surprised, too.
Because I think before we got the complaint, I went down that road and seen the bags stretched, you know, like a dog, and something had dragged the garbage across the yard.
Yes, and it's been in the back since at least last year.
So we don't have a motion written out, do we, Jack?
No, I thought we would wait to see what the particulars were, and we can make the motion as Bill recommended to approve the abatement process to resolve this matter and issue any kind of limitations or restrictions involving the removal of what particular type of trash that's there.
Okay. I can make that motion.
Okay.
Hey, this is Rob. I had my hand up for a little bit. I was curious, are we concerned that where this Kevin is at? That maybe he's not... I think Sean's spot on that we need to send some sort of welfare check for where he is at. Was anyone else concerned on that? That maybe something might have happened to Kevin, and these people are squatting in his house, or are these family members, Sean?
This is his, at least, she claims to be his wife. She said it's not, well, this was last year, not a legal divorce. She claims that he left for another woman, same last name, same last name, Kirkpatrick.
Okay.
So, she said their son, and he was, when I was out there on the, what is it, 28th, he was cleaning out a Tahoe. So, yeah, she claims to be an ex or a current wife. I'm not sure of the legal status. I don't know if she knows. And then, yeah, same last name.
Okay. Thanks. And then, maybe a question to the city attorney, Bill. What in the chances this gets foreclosed that we even get our money back out of it? Will the bank pay the back taxes on it, or are we out the money by investing in this, in the event that this house gets foreclosed on?
Mr. Mayor and Council, usually the liens that are against the property are taken into account during the foreclosure process. Now, the bank's position is prior to any of those liens, but generally, depending on the type of foreclosure process, the buyers would negotiate those liens. So, they could be wiped out. It just depends on whether it's a deed in lieu of foreclosure, or it's an actual foreclosure. Still, we want to make sure that we tag the property with those costs because there's probably, typically there is value in these properties, but we can't determine that without doing some investigation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to confirm, Sean, you went there with a deputy from the sheriff's office?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
So, there was a deputy on scene that could have made evaluations on health, safety, as well as resident welfare at that same date and time, so?
And it was specifically went there due to her last year's perceived mental issues, and it's on body camera. So, that's the biggest reason.
So the sheriff's office isn't aware?
Yeah, and they go there quite frequently from what the deputy was telling me.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, we'll want to get the deputy's records of that visit, if there are any reports.
I have the case number in my report. I can forward that to whoever needs it.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Scott, you want to finish then?
Yeah. This is Scott. I make a motion to approve the abatement of the property at 16235 Cornell Street Northeast regarding the trash that's been left in front and in the rear of the residence.
Ms. Jenny, I second.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion? Are there questions here? None. Jenny, you want to vote?
Jenny, I.
Scott, I.
Rob, I.
And Ron, I. The motion passes. We'll go on to item number...
Thank you, Sean.
Four, escrow fund transfers.
As discussed at the November 4th, 2025 City Council Workshop, the City of Columbus requires escrow deposits from development applicants to cover costs related to legal, engineering, and planning services. All escrow accounts are reviewed for completeness, and the following action items to transfer costs to the appropriate expense accounts are recommended. Transfer of costs from park construction escrow, Apollo Development escrow, RZBIUP renewal escrow, and transfer costs from the Lackner Development Amendment to legal, engineering, and expense accounts are recommended for transfer to land held for resale for the Apollo Development Account and for the appropriate expense accounts for the others. So, the motion is recommended that council approve the transfer of these outstanding escrow balances as discussed at the city workshop meeting that occurred last week.
This is what we discussed at the workshop?
Correct.
All right. I, Ron Hanagraff, move to approve the transfer of outstanding escrow balances for park construction, Apollo Development, RZBIUP, and Lackner Development Agreement Amendment to the appropriate expense accounts as recommended in the staff report of item C.4 for the November 12, 2025 City Council Meeting.
Scott, I'll second.
We've got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Ms. Jenny, I have one thing to note. So, just to clarify for residents, just want to make sure that we're all understanding that these were old, now defunct projects, correct? So Cheryl talking about that. So just making sure that we note that for residents who may not have researched this. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Jenny, for saying that. Have we done nothing else? Forward, let's take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
Scott, I.
Rob, I.
And Ron, I. The motion passes. We'll go on to item number five, bond and park fund transfers.
This will be a two-part presentation. There will be two motions requested here. The first one is for the bond transfer request. The final payment and fiscal agent fee for the Bond 214A Street Paving Projects was paid in 2025. Revenue for authorization of the bond payments was not received as anticipated due to delinquent special assessment. As bond fund accounts cannot have a negative balance, and the City of Columbus has a bond reserve account, the Finance Director is requesting to transfer $42,949.46 from the bond reserve account to the Bond 2014A account. Recoverable special assessments will be credited to Bond Reserve Account Fund 375 to make it whole as these are received. So the first motion then would be to approve the transfer of the $42,949.46 from the Bond Reserve Account to the Bond 214A account.
I, Ron Hanagraff, move to approve the transfer of $42,949.46 from the Bond Reserve Account 375 to the Bond 2014A Account 314. Anybody want to second that?
Ms. Jenny, I second.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions?
Just one question. How much does that leave in the bond reserve account?
It would leave about $100,000, Scott.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
Scott, I.
Sorry, my button froze. Rob, I.
And Ron, I. Motion passes. We go on to the second one?
Yes, there's a general fund transfer request also included under this item, and that would be a transfer of $48,000 from the general fund to the Park Capital Fund to cover the funding gap for the Tennis Court Project, which is approved by City Council on August 13, 2025. As discussed, the city would use the proceeds from the proposed sale of a publicly owned property that has a potential value exceeding this amount to reimburse the general fund for the transfer. Should the sale of this property not occur or fall short of the amount needed for the transfer reimbursement, the city could also include, number one, the use of park dedication fees that could be generated from the sale of city property adjacent to and north of the Caribou Coffee for a market rated apartment project to reimburse the use of a general funds transfer for the Tennis Court Project, or it could consider the use of the $48,000 transfer from the general fund to the Parks Capital Fund as an investment in park infrastructure with no obligation for repayment. At this time, staff is requesting the $48,000 transfer be approved, and that the two issues of recovering that revenue to other sales would be used to reimburse this transfer.
Okay. I, Ron Hanagraff, move to approve the transfer of $48,000 from the general fund 100 to the Park Capital Fund 403 to cover the funding gap for the Tennis Court Project.
Scott, I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
Scott, I.
Rob, I.
And Ron, I. The motion passes. We'll go on to item number six, performance review policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am not going to bore you with the staff report that you've already heard on multiple occasions. As you know, we did discuss this at the council workshop last week. Nothing has been edited from the version that you saw, and it is presented to you tonight for approval.
Any questions from any of the council members?
No. I can make the motion. This is Scott. I move to approve the performance review policy as presented in Agenda Item C.6 for the November 12, 2025 City Council Meeting.
Second, Rob.
We've got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Is there any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
Scott, I.
Rob, I.
And Ron, I. Motion passes. We'll go on to item number seven, Northwest Quad Rezoning and Confereensive Plan Amendment Approval.
The City Council approved the Northwest Quad Confereensive Plan Amendment on August 27, 2025, following a public hearing before the Planning Commission on July 16, 2025. The approval was contingent upon review by the Metropolitan Council. The associated rezoning ordinance 25-05 also received a public hearing before the Planning Commission on July 16, 2025. Approval of that ordinance was also contingent upon the Metropolitan Council's review of the comp plan amendment. On November 3, 2025, the city received a letter from the Metropolitan Council confirming that the comp plan amendment is consistent with the regional growth plans and may be adopted by City Council. As part of this, there are two motions. Motion number one would be approval of Resolution 25-15, adopting a Northwest Quad Comp Plan and Publication Summary, and the second motion would be approval of ordinance 25-05, amending Chapter 7A of the Columbus City Code.
I can make the motion. This is Jenny. I move to approve Resolution 25-15, a resolution adopting an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan to change the land use designation of the Northwest Quad from general commercial to mixed-use high density.
Scott, I'll second.
We've got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion, any other questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
Scott, I.
Rob, I.
And Ron, I. Motion one passes.
This is Scott. I can move to approve ordinance 25-05 and ordinance amending Chapter 7A zoning regulations in the City of Columbus.
Ms. Jenny, I second.
We've got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion, any other questions?
I just have one thing. I'd like to just say, hey, Eleanor Hahn, Assistant City Planner, did a good job of putting all this together and getting it back, so very much appreciated.
Good comment. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
Scott, I.
Rob, I.
Ron, I. Motion passes. We'll go on to item D, consultant liaison and staff reports. We'll go to the large red area here, city engineer report. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do have three items to report this evening. The first is in regards to the Notre Dame Street soil borings. AET boring company will be out there next week, so they'll be starting, and as I remember, it's two to three days' worth of boring, so they'll be starting on Monday and should wrap up by Wednesday, right before Thanksgiving. So you should start seeing traffic control being set up here in the next couple of days, so it'll be ready to go next week. I don't know if you have any questions regarding that, but we do have, I believe, 50 borings that are being marked out on the site, so they'll be starting that work.
So Brian, is traffic control, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, go ahead.
Is traffic, are we going to be down to one lane with flaggers out there while we're doing soil borings?
Yes, they may have to do some of that, but that's all in their contracts, so they're going to be responsible for that. There will be no road closure, no detour. It's just they'll have to...
There could be some minor delays for residents on Notre Dame during the day?
Yes.
Okay.
I was going to ask, how long is it going to take to get to findings?
They did say three weeks.
The date they finished?
We'll get the final report three weeks after they're completed with the boring, so.
And I suppose it's 8 to 4 PM or something, they're going to do this?
Yes. Yep.
This is Rob. I just, I got a question around, are they planning to have flaggers out there? Because those last guys that started the crack seal or whatever it was on the last one, they didn't have flaggers. They were just letting cars whiz around them. Is there anything in the contract that they have to have flaggers?
There's nothing in the contract requiring flaggers, but they are to do traffic control according to the construction manual of the MINDOT. So, if their positions are such, they're supposed to provide the necessary level of traffic control.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, like I say, the last guys, they didn't, half of them had vests on, half of them didn't. There weren't flaggers, but I imagine this is a better outfit than that last one, so, thank you.
This is Jenny. So I know that there are flags out there currently. I assume maybe that's a part of this project where they're kind of noting where that's going to go. Do you happen to know the date, or will we get a chance to know what specific date that is that they're going to be out there, so we can maybe share that on social media and things like that?
Monday through Wednesday, right?
So Monday through Wednesday, the 17th through the 20th.
17 through 19, okay.
Can we put that on the reader board, too?
Yeah.
Out front?
Thank you, Brian.
Yes.
You got other items, too?
Moving on. We did get a request from the developer of the Brown Beagle to release their letter of credit. The best we can do is reduce the letter of credit to 20% of the total, which it currently is already at, and the developer's agreement requires us to hold it for one year from the date of completion of the improvements. The improvements were completed on October 5 of 2025, so the letter of credit can be released October 5 of 2026. So, I guess the best we can do at this point is just acknowledge that the improvements have been completed, and that it does start the one-year letter of credit to letter of credit release. So that's kind of the motion that we have, is to basically move to hold the letter of credit for one year until October 5, 2026.
Then they'll get their money, then?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion, as recommended by the city and engineer. I, Ron, move to hold the reduction of the letter of credit for the Brown Beagle LLC project in the amount of $81,250 until October 2, 2026.
This is Jenny, I second.
Just a quick question. Is it October 5 or the 2nd as written?
Oh, yeah.
It was October 5 as the date of completion.
Typo, then, huh? Should be the 5?
Yes, which is a Monday. I had to check it to see why there was a change here, but that is a Monday, so it's appropriate.
All right, the motion still stays, but the 5, okay, and it's seconded.
Jenny, I second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
Scott, I.
Rob, I.
Ron, I. Motion passes.
And the third and final item I have is to approve partial payment number one for the Tennis Court improvements. It's my understanding the project representatives have reviewed the project and determined that the improvements to date are appropriate for the request, and so the partial payment does include a retainage, so there's a 5% retainage. So it's work to date, completed, less 5%. So that's the first partial payment in the amount of $85,167.50.
This is Jenny. As recommended by city engineer Brian Bachmeyer, I move to approve pay application number one for the City of Columbus Tennis Court Project in the amount of $85,167.50.
This is Ron. I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
Scott, I.
Rob, I.
And Ron, I. The motion passes. Thank you, Brian, unless there's more?
No, that's enough for you this evening. Thank you.
Brian earned his money tonight.
He always does.
True.
Item number two, the city attorney's report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just a quick update. We have sent our comments on to the DNR with regard to the canoe launch at St. Clair Lakes, and the staff at the DNR will review those comments and then get them to the attorney at the DNR. It was Rob Carey. We've worked with Rob Carey on this site, so he will be familiar with it. So just as soon as the DNR gets back to us, we'll get back to you and to the residents.
Any estimate on lead time on that, Bill?
I don't have an estimate, but certainly within a couple of weeks, we would be prompting a response. Anytime you work with state agencies, it takes a couple of prompts, but we'll move it along. We know the residents are interested in resolving that question.
That it, Bill?
That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mayor and city councils report. Jenny, do you have anything?
This is Jenny. I had a resident reach out, and they had a question about a non-permanent storage unit and putting that in their backyard. They wanted to kind of go about it the right way, and so they asked my opinion. I had them reach out to Sean. They had worked with Sean in the past. He was able to help them with that, and he actually went to their house and talked to them for quite a while about it. So just, again, I know Sean's not here, but just thanking him for going and working with the residents on that.
Scott?
No report tonight. Thank you.
Rob?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a shout out to Public Works. Bill, Bill Carth showed up to the Columbus Trunker Treat deal that, I believe we haven't had a council meeting since then, but him and his wife came out and supported Columbus.
I think we got the idea of what he was saying.
Hey, can you guys, can you guys hear me with my camera off?
Yeah.
You guys and gals? Yeah, no, it was just a thank you to Public Works. Bill Carth had showed up with one of our excavators, our front end loader, to the trunk or treat event at the Columbus School. So, big thanks to Public Works for that and being out in the community. David Tsai-Drowak also did a fantastic deal as well, so thanks to all the people that showed up for that. Thank you.
Now we can hear you good. Thank you, Rob. The only thing I have to say is I did get a call or whatever about Midco hooking up on Broadway. There's still, some people haven't been hooked up. I did give it to Lindsay, and Lindsay's contacted MINDCO, and we're supposed to hear back. So if you get any calls, there's a group of them about the 7100 block that haven't been, at least that's the story that the guy's saying down there. So, just to let you know that Lindsay is on that one.
Say, Mayor, I forgot something, if I could.
Yeah.
So, with what you were talking about, Midco, I've got several calls about what they're going to do about repairing ditches where the residents are mowing their ditches currently. They've left atrocious messes in some of the residents' ditches, which we know it's public right of way, but they've been maintaining it on the city's behalf to keep a nice yard. Do we have any idea, maybe from the city engineer or the city administrator, on what condition they're going to bring that back to? They've left pretty big holes and depressions and things of that nature.
Rob, they will have to establish that back to its pre-existing condition. We'll check their right-of-way permits and notify them of those areas where they have to go back and make sure they restore that to its condition prior to construction.
I happen to know a little about this, too, because they contract, Midco contracts to an outfit in Shakopee, and it's a landscaping outfit. On 165th and Notre Dame, they had the same problem, but if you get ahold of Midco right of way, they'll get on them, I know. So maybe that's the thing, Rob, to have them call.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'd seen a landscape outfit. I don't know if he was kind of, because I'd been over there hunting, deer hunting last week, but just kind of seemed like he was maybe scoping it out, but maybe that is the case. So, thank you. I just wanted to, you know, with the ground freezing, I didn't want them to get final payment and then walk away from some shoddy repairs, per se.
Councilmember Bush, this is Aaron. We do have right-of-way permit inspections that happen at the completion of work, and so whether they call us or we close out the permit, we won't close the permit out until that inspection has been done. And if this is the case, and the permit was pulled by Midco, they'll get a notice reminding them that the right-of-way hasn't been restored, and they'll have to hire somebody to come take care of it.
Great. Thank you so much, Aaron.
As a backup to that, I will contact Midco with their project director for this and make sure they're aware of the issue, so that they'll make sure they follow through with all the restoration required.
Yeah, so there was actually a resident that went around to several other houses and repaired it, and I kind of stopped him and said, what are you doing? And he said, well, our neighborhood don't like their ditches tore up, and I have a skid steer, so I'll fix it. And I told him, you should probably stop doing that and put that back on the contractor, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you, Rob. Item number five, Personnel Committee Report, none. Planning Commission Report, none.
I do have a brief one.
You got a brief one on the Planning?
Planning Commission, yeah. Did meet on November 5. They did hold a public hearing for the proposed fence ordinance. There were no speakers at the public hearing. Yeah, there was this discussion on the shared driveway ordinance here in the city, and Eleanor updated or gave some guidance to the Planning Commission on that. And then there was discussion about the animal ordinance survey at the last Planning Commission.
Thank you, Scott.
Yep.
Item number seven, Public Works Report, will be none tonight. Item number eight, the City Administrator's Report.
I just wanted to report, too, that the city went out for requests, for proposals for our IT services. We've received proposals from two of the companies. And fortunately, those were the two of the best companies that we solicited, that we thought. So, we'll be evaluating those two proposals and bringing that to City Council for consideration for approval at the November, the next City Council meeting. We've been basically kind of Band-Aid, patching our way through that since the Paragon contract expired in August. So, with the award of this, we'll be back to full IT services for the city.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. Is that it?
Yes.
We'll go to item E, announcements and reminders. There's a park board meeting on Tuesday, November 18th, at 2025, at 5:30 PM.